Between the hour six o'clock, we will call the meeting of the Berkshire Regional School District to order pursuant to Governor Baker's July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote until further notice. In-person attendance is limited to Berkshire Hills Regional School District members, superintendents, and others. Agenda items are listed as those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed. And if not listed, may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the School Committee Recorder and will be broadcast. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our agenda. I will start by uh calling the roll. Steve Bannon, absent. Richard Doni, present, presiding. Corey Sprague.
Yeah.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Bonnie Bond Befoni.
Yeah.
Jason St. Peter, here. William Fields.
Here.
Anne Hutchinson.
Here.
Sarah Borla.
Here.
And I note that we have a few student representatives here, so I don't know if Christie or Ben or whoever is responsible wants to introduce them.
Yeah, great. I'm really excited. I really want to appreciate the school committee for inviting middle school students. First, I believe, at least in my time, I'm really excited. I'd like to introduce Sarah Brown and Lomo. So presenting this session.
Thank you. And we do have minutes of November seventeenth, which were provided in the packet. If there's a motion, so moved. Second. Seeing no debate on the on the motion, boys vote. Okay. Oh. We don't need your roll balls, because all in person, so okay.
Yeah, no bonds.
No bonds.
People, we don't need to do a roll ball anymore.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
Yep.
Oh, I got it.
Any, any, any opposition? Motion carries. Did you want to move to the treasurer's report or go to the superintendent's report?
Well, let's go right into the superintendent's report.
Okay, yeah.
So I've got a little bit of good news and then I'll turn it over to the students. I want to share, and Christie and the principals, but I wanted to share, we've got two relatively big grants. One from the town of Great Barrington, and that's the marijuana remediation money that's for a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It's quite a significant amount, and that's work to support work around health and wellness. And then just minutes ago, we learned that we applied to the governor's office for the the government efficiency grant, and we got a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from that. And we're the fiscal agent for the regional school district planning board's work. So that should cover the cost of that work through a potential vote to the conclusion of that that process, whichever way it goes. So that's, that's really exciting, and I may actually go out to Boston next Tuesday to be at a ceremony for that, which is, which is fun. So those are two things at the district level. Katie, Moneybrook's not able to join us tonight because of a family commitment, but I think we go to the middle school. And Ben, either you or your students can share what's going on.
Yes, I'm really excited to share the good news from middle school.
Um, in the education and learning topic of rural intelligence, we placed first in the middle school category. Recently, in October, we had a Halloween dance that took itself, and we had about fifty, sixty people there for seventh and eighth grade. We hosted a, we are currently hosting a food drive. Fifth and sixth are hosting their own, and seventh and eighths are hosting a different one. Another fun thing during fall was seventh and eighth graders got the opportunity to do Halloween window painting, collaborate with Ms. Malone Smith to come up with Halloween-themed designs to paint on display windows in near Main Street. Um, so just a month ago, we went to the Boys' Home site in Norman-Brockville to learn about history. Yeah. Um, we also, just a couple of days ago, recently, Mr. Lee came to the seventh grade to talk about what it was like to be a good student. It was called Portrait of a Graduate, and it was things like leadership and such to teach the seventh graders about that. Um, we were also talking about the kindness ninja, which is just like, which is a way of spreading kindness throughout the grade in a more discreet way that is not self-centered towards yourself and anything about others.
Great. And then the activity they actually did with the week is done with all four of the grades, similar to the activity that we did before the pandemic, when we did the Portrait of a Graduate, the different skills, twenty-first century skills. So we picked that up again, which is really good, just as well. It's just a cycle through all the students. Cool. Are you guys good?
Um, I don't think anything has really happened. There's a talent.
Well, I have a lot of talent. Do you want to share?
Okay. Oh, yeah, there's a movie tomorrow hosted by the juniors.
Yeah, it's Home Alone, and it's open to students and adults from the agency.
Yeah, and also, um, no, it was Tuesday, advisory, you, um, tenth graders took a, um, this, I don't know, this like worship thing for the project on Railroad Street. And it was just like collecting data and comparing it to when they were eighth graders. And I believe that the seniors also took that and compared it to when they were tenth graders.
Christie, do you?
Uh, so thank you. Yes, they were doing that, and the girls were referring to the prevention needs assessment survey that's happening in the student school. Winter sports all started this week, so those are underway. We have a ping pong tournament happening in high school right now, raise funds for Charlie's Fund. And we also have a Toys for Pop drive happening in the school right now. We have some upcoming annual events, and I'm so excited to be able to say annual events again, because we haven't said that in a while. But we have our annual talent show on Friday, December ninth coming, and our annual holiday concert that is coming on Friday, December sixteenth. And this Sunday, we also have our National Honor Society ceremony happening to celebrate the students that will be inducted into the National Honor Society. A couple of other things that I just want to highlight with our Student Adult Advisory Board. We did make a shift in their work with adults in that we have invited representatives from each of the sub, working subgroups to attend the bar grant meetings with school and district leadership. And we're doing that so that we can try to actually make sure that we are taking action steps on the things that students are bringing forward and that we're able to address any needs or concerns that come out of their work, the student work. And then the academic advancement subgroup organized a full ninth and tenth grade forum in the auditorium, where we reviewed for the whole class, for both classes, our overview of proficiency and our work on proficiency, what it means, what it looks like, and the students are collecting more questions and information from students right now in the ninth and tenth grade. So. On the grant side, Peter had it at a couple at the district level. We at the high school have been awarded an invitation grant for our pathways that we have. So that's for advanced manufacturing. And for our healthcare pathway, we were awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant from the state of Massachusetts to continue to support those programs. And then we moved from our initial application for pathway designation for business and finance to the second phase. So we were accepted into that, and now we're into the next phase of the application process to start a third pathway.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Tonight, we were going to be joined by Liz LaFond, who's the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, Council of School Committee Administrative Personnel Representative. And she was going to give Doreen her, Doreen Twess, my assistant, her award for being the best administrative assistant in the whole Commonwealth. But she's stick, so she's gonna, we'll, we'll just keep building this up every, every two weeks. And Liz will join us next week, and, and Doreen's really wonderful, and being in the spotlight's like torture for her. So that this keeps getting dragged down, and it's awful, but we'll celebrate her at our next meeting. The, the next thing I want to do is share a little context. General Dynamics has offered to donate computer equipment, servers, and workstations valued at forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-eight cents. And I would love it if, one, I'd like to recognize their donation, but I'd love it if, if somebody in the, in the committee would make, make a motion to accept the donation. The other thing that's important to note is all this equipment is new, which is really unusual.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I, I. Any, those in opposition? Carries unanimously.
Okay, so let me set up the next thing a little bit. We're joined by Elsa Hernandez and Beth Cook. They spoke to you previously, like late, late June last year. And we've since gotten back their MCAS scores from the last, last year's ninth graders, this year's tenth graders. And, and something magical happened. And to give a little context, the combination of, of what the teachers and the students did in a, in a post-COVID year, as we supported leveling up or mixed ability grouping, is really quite remarkable. So Christie and I asked them, and they're very eager to share, to like, share what happened and what they did to help support that happen and where we're going. So I'll click the slides. Feel free to present from here, standing up, sitting down, whatever, whatever works.
I agree, I'm comfortable.
Just give me a sec to get it. Get it.
Great. That's, I recognize a lot of your faces, and it makes it seem like a middle school student here. So, and Elsa.
Yeah, Elsa Hernandez.
You guys.
Me too.
So what we're going to do is just take you through the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And we're going to start by talking just really briefly about the MCAS results, sort of our rationale, and then what some of our next steps and next thinking is. So I know that Peter had, or Christie, Christie had kind of summarized at a previous meeting some of the data. So I'll just run through this pretty quickly. So the first, if you want to go to the next slide, the first set of data, I think you saw this table. But so this was just a comparison of Berkshire Hills compared to the state. So this was like the first set of data that we got back this past October. And in, in orange, you can see sort of our comparison to the state. And so we can see, you can see here that, oh, that's not going to work on here. So you can see here that like we have, so this is with meets, exceeds, expectations, that we have a program that exceeds needs, partially met and not met. So we really wanted to just take a look and see where we fell with all of our students. And then we wanted to take a look at where we saw like the greatest gains to start. So where we saw that was right here, if you click the next slide. It should, yeah, so right here, we have the biggest game was in our high needs population when we looked at it compared to the state. So high needs includes like students with disabilities, students of economically disadvantaged students. And so we thought that was a pretty big game. But our question then became, if we're comparing ourselves to the state, then do we just have a lot fewer, like many fewer kids with disabilities? And that's maybe why it looks like it, it looks so much better than what it is. We wanted to just compare ourselves with like sort of the trend of the state. So if you go to the next slide, this is just like the last few years of data. We look at our students at the high school who are classified as high needs. We are like very much in line with the state in terms of what the trend is, so it's going up. We're a little bit lower than the state, but we are like pretty in line with the numbers for what this, like schools around the state are, are seeing. So we felt really good about that. So then we wanted to look and see sort of what, how do we compare to like other schools in Berkshire County? Are other schools, like, do they have a similar experience? So if we go to the next slide, we just took a look at, again, like the needs makes these expectations partially met and not met. And sort of the average score, so an average score of five hundred or more means that they met the expectation. And it should be noted that if it's partially met, kids still get the credit for having like, that MCAS has then, is sufficient for them to report their graduation requirement. And you were really happy with the data. This is, just to note, this is actually all science data. So there were a few students who liked the sign, a different science MCAS, like chemistry, they have to do a retake for, came into the school. But what we noticed with this data was just that, like, we felt really good about what we had done. All of our students, our average score was above the threshold. We had the most number of students in the county get meets or exceeds expectations. So we felt really good about that. And then, like, I feel like every time we saw something good, we were like, wait, but it's because of this? So then we wanted to see, like, what has the trend been in terms of the data? You know, is seventy-one percent what we had before? Is it higher or lower than in previous years? So if you go to the next slide, what we wanted to look at, so these were just some of the schools in Berkshire County. I didn't pull all of them because all of them didn't have data for biology specifically. So what we see, if you click on the next button here, I think it'll come up. So just something to note, the green bars represent the new science tests that are being given. So in two thousand twenty-two, this past spring, the state administered the new Next Generation Science Standard Test, which we'll talk about like what that actually means. And so what you can see is that in two thousand twenty-two, every district, every green bar that I was able to pull data for in Berkshire County decreased. And so that's just like an interesting finding. So there's either it's, some interpretations might be it's a more difficult test. Some interpretations might be it's focusing on a different way of doing science. And then it's not necessarily more difficult, but it's just a different way of thinking. And so the yellow bar is two thousand twenty-one, which was the year that we were like hybrid and partially remote and very scattered. So I, like, in my head, I don't really count two thousand twenty-one because it was just such a crazy year. It turned out that we did really well that year, and I really don't understand.
I didn't think lower standard.
That's what I thought, right?
Initially, I think.
No, you guys are, it just doesn't make sense to me how much higher it was that year. And then two thousand twenty, students, that's when we were out of school and students were exempt from taking the, the MCAS. And so two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen are really the years that Elsa and I were interested in looking at because those are the years that prior to COVID, these were uninterrupted, like typical school years. But these were school years where it was just your, the, the old MCAS, so like sort of the traditional content-based MCAS. So what we wanted to look at is really blue and red before, and then what happened with green? So if you look at a lot of other, like all districts, blue and red are relatively high. And then green, there's like a significant drop in many districts. And I think we felt pretty good that like we had stayed pretty, like on, on course, even though we weren't. When you look at the previous MCAS, it'll be interesting to see next year with another NGSS test, like in place to see the trend. If you go onto the state website and try to do this comparison, they won't actually let you do it. So I had to do this by hand because they don't want the comparison between an old test style and a new version of the test. So, so that was just something interesting that we saw. We were just curious about what the trends were in other districts in Berkshire County. Yeah. Okay, so what we wanted to then do is just look at our high needs population because that was really where we saw like the most significant gains compared to the state. And we wanted to take a closer look at our Berkshire County, other peers in Berkshire County and how they were doing. And we felt like, okay, we're doing pretty good here, too. So that was a great, that was great. So we'll just keep going. You guys saw this data already? So like when Christie came to us with the data, she's like, the data is so great, and like, you, you guys need to look at it. So we're looking at it, and then we're trying to figure out like, well, what was it? Like, what happened last year that may allow for this, like, great achievement by so many of our students? In particular, the students that we really have been making a lot of shifts for, which are high need students, right? Like trying to raise that level of the, the work that they're doing. And so when we look at sort of like the bigger picture, the first, like the entire high school, this was our first full year back to normal after COVID year, right? So I say that in quotes, but, so back to normal, the whole high school is in person. We also implemented advisory twice a week for a half an hour for all students. And then if we look more in, more specifically, more micro at the ninth grade level, then ninth grade teachers are all engaged in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year in ILG, Common Planning Time, board meetings with students that we share in all the core content areas. So that was a shift that happened. Another shift that happened with the ninth grade is that we piloted this leveling up, right? So taking away the standard, the CP, the honors, and putting students in classes together and to try to get to a more common equitable experience for students. And with offering the opportunity to earn honors designation, we heard from students last year in the spring about that process. And then the ninth grade is also having proficiency-based assessments. And initially, we called it proficiency-based grading, but really, we weren't grading, we're not recording out proficiencies. We're just assessing, we're designing assessments using proficiencies or competencies to do that. So that was work specific to the ninth grade. And so we got even more narrow at the science, you know, at the science, at the, at the department level. Our science department, along with the middle school, met right before we shut down with COVID in February. We did a training, an NGSS training. So we worked with a group out of, I don't know where they were from. Do you remember where they were from? We all met the middle school teachers and the high school teachers, and we had a training. It was a two-day training. It was a really pretty intense training. And it covered this idea of, so NGSS is sort of like this three-dimensional framework, which Elsa's going to talk more about. But, and so the, and the MCAS also changed to an NGSS-aligned MCAS that year. So we continued our work from February of two thousand nineteen, when we came back in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year with this NGSS mindset as we planned our curriculum for last year. Go to the next slide.
Okay, so out of all those things, it's really hard for us to measure how being in D-level classes or having two advisors a week had an impact on the students. So we are going to talk about what we did and what we changed, knowing that maybe that wasn't the cause. And maybe next year, we don't keep seeing that trend of the increase. So we are happy, but we are also really cautious, okay? So it's not like, oh, I knew this. No. So it was a happy surprise. So we're going to talk about what we did and why we did it. Okay, so what we did was based our classrooms in, based on NGSS. NGSS stands for Next Generation Science Standard. And it's an idea where the content becomes only a third of what you're doing in the classroom, but it comes together with how you use that content. So it's actually driven not by the content itself, but by what you do with that content. Okay, so basically, the idea in NGSS is that you start the unit with a phenomenon, a problem, something that is possible, that is interesting, something that is like, oh, my God, I don't know what happened here, but it looks very interesting. And then you kind of research what happened, you get different pieces, until you, you create a puzzle that makes sense to you, and you solve the problem. It, it's going to make more sense now that I'm going to give you some examples. Okay, um, next slide.
So if we look at sort of like what our path was in previous years to this year, so what did we do with this? So in previous years, our curriculum was topic-based, so it was very much centered around content. So it would be like your typical biology course that you would see. You start off with biochemistry, you would talk body systems, you would do parts of the cell, you would do genetics, evolution, ecology. And you would do like micro to macro level, like we build on these topics. But they would be taught as sort of discreet events. And maybe every once in a while, you'd have someone who would like, just off the cuff, make a connection. But it was very like isolated in the way that you would teach the content. You would make connections within a unit. So you would look at like the cell organelles and try to explain how the mitochondria is related to the ribosome or the cell membrane. But you really wouldn't try to make a lot of intentional connections between something like an organelle and genetics. Like, how does that, how do those things connect? So, and for the most part, each topic was covered once, and you would assess it one, like at the end of the unit, right? So it's more of a traditional trajectory for science. So with NGSS, if you click on the next slide, it's going to be phenomena-based. So it's not based on content, it's based on some sort of problem. And instead of kind of structuring it based on topics, you structure it based on themes. So the four themes we'll talk you through that we used for the entire year last year were Wolves of Yellowstone, General Sherman Tree, The Wound, and the Kentucky Blue People. Those were the four units that we, we chose to use. And so when we look at these units, and we can talk about some of the topics that we wove together, what we hope that you see and hear from us right now is that we went macro, we started really big with a problem. And then we would take the students really micro, really specific, using content and skills. And then we would pull them back again and look at the question and say like, well, what do we understand now about the problem? And what do we still need to try to figure out? And then we would go deeper, and then we would come back out again, and we keep doing sort of this macro, micro, macro, micro. And what was really cool about this is that students were making connections, like they were practicing making these connections between curriculum and cross ideas all year long because the topic, topics were revisited. So we might talk about like photosynthesis in the Wolves of Yellowstone, and then we would talk about it in General Sherman Tree. And then we might talk about it somehow in the wound unit, like it just kept, the topics kept coming back. So the topics were revisited, and we felt like that really helps with like retention of the content. Next slide.
So for those of you who are curious about competencies or proficiencies, we actually started using them last year. I would say that more intentional. I would say that more intentionally towards the end of the year, but, um, it's something that if you put it like this, I think it would make a lot of sense. So imagine that you have natural world and we have probably here, and I don't know what the answer is. So I have to investigate it. And when I investigate it, I collect data. And when I collect the data now, I need to make sense of what that data means. So then I can create an explanation, I can draw a model, I can figure out, okay, given what I know now, probably this is what it means, right? And then I can go back to it and say, well, I still don't know this. Or this only answers this partial section. So if you click again, um, this is how it goes in action. So it would be the phenomenon in the natural world, which is the problem. Then we would pierce where the competencies come, but now they are in context. So we are going to have five for the science department. So asking questions and planning and carrying out investigations is going to be towards the beginning of the unit. When I'm trying to figure out what's happening, right? I'm going to collect data, what happens next? Now I am going to use the next two competencies. I'm going to analyze the data and I'm going to develop and use models to see, does that make sense? What is, what is my data telling me? How can I now answer the natural world phenomenon? And then finally I put all the pieces together. Um, and I can communicate and get explanations, evidence on what's going on. So these are the five competencies that the science, the, not the science department, the whole VA C R S team has agreed. Those are the five that we were using and that is a context that we're going to be using.
K through twelve. So we've been meeting at our last full district-wide conference day. We did agree that these were the five that we're using for kindergarten through twelve grade.
Okay, so next slide.
So for the first, so step one is to present the phenomena to students and for the students to create an initial model. And so we, we chose these four big phenomena from here. And just like Elsa said, the phenomena serves as our anchor. We keep coming back to it every day. Um, we ask students to make an initial model. It's really great to do the initial model because we can really see what kids thinking is at the beginning and then what the thinking is at the end. We do some micro learning. So here we have like four micro, like where we really zoom in. And every time we zoom in, we're able to think about how that relates. How does this idea relate to the phenomena? How does the second idea relate to the phenomena? And then finally we can put it together in our final thoughts and which is our summative task, which proficiency-based topic. So if we go to the next slide, these are just some examples of phenomena. And we did some screenshots of, uh, student notebooks and we just passed them out. So the first phenomena we did, we showed students the pictures, these two pictures um, of the Yellowstone ecosystem. And we just asked them, how do you think the Yellowstone ecosystem has changed? And how did humans play a role in it? So the first, uh, day of the unit, we just show these pictures. We actually asked students to act, uh, to write down observations first and wonderings and questions. And that's part of one of the competencies is questioning. And then we asked them to develop a model. So this would be an example of an initial model a student made this year. So you can see the student has questions still, like so she understands what she thinks she understands. It's like her wolves, uh, took over and they're eating, the elk population is declining. And then she writes the wolves ate the elk, I guess. And then she's writing a question about like, how did this happen? Like how did, how does the population, why are there ravens over here? Why are there frogs all of a sudden? Why are there bears? Where did that fever dam come from? And so students have a lot of questions. And so it's about like taking, taking the, um, this exercise every time we do this. It's about taking the focus off of the content, off of the idea that you need to know what's going on. And actually like, one of the most important skills a scientist has is questioning and asking questions and making keen observations about what you see. So this type of activity really take like de-centers the content and puts on to the center this idea of skill of questioning and making observations. So that's just one example. If we go to the next slide, our second phenomena was about this General Sherman Tree, which is the largest tree. And so the question, we showed the kids this picture. There's actually a video they watched that kind of shows people walking by the tree so they can see how massive. And then asked them to talk about where does the mass come from and how do humans contribute to it? And so this was an initial model that was developed by a group of students on poster paper. And, um, they're collaborating on what's happening. So these kids think that there's rain, there's water, there's soil, there's roots. Um, they're talking about the human is removing toxic vines and other invasive species, which is something that we talked about in the Wolves of Yellowstone. So they're like immediately trying to make connections between other units that they've already talked about. So you can see this is like a kind of a great example of how students are making connections between what they know from previous units and also just their prior knowledge. And so, um, here, this is their initial model. Next one, Elsa, you want to go first?
Sure. So this one was actually a pretty simple question. Um, the question was, how does eating help heal a wound? And if you look at the model, you have a wound, munch, munch, munch. But eating food cells are able to generate energy and continue to grow. Food gives nutrition and energy to your whole body in which cells are very prominent, which skin is made of. You will be amazed when you see the final model. Okay, this is the beginning of the day, like whole turkey. And actually you're gonna try it right now. So just go to the next one and you guys are gonna do it. So this is a picture of, uh, a family in Kentucky. And if you look at it, there, the father and three of the children have blue skin. And then the mother and another three children have normal skin color. So what happened?
The question is, how and why did the Kentucky Blue People turn big blue? So the first thing we would ask is, what do you see? So Ms. Hernan has just did that for you, right? So we actually have a video that we showed that's like a reenactment of this whole scenario. And so then we asked you guys, what do you know? What do you know to be true from just your prior knowledge about what you're seeing here?
By the way, the, the father came from France and mother was born in Kentucky.
So, so one thing, so for example, let me give you an example. A student wrote something like, I see, um, four children are blue and three children don't have blue skin. What I know is that, and this, we have a picture of this, so this is really what kids wrote. Um, what I know is that when you eat carrots, sometimes your skin, if you eat enough carrots, your skin can have that pigment to it. And so then they wrote, I wonder if they ate blueberries. If they just ate a lot of blueberries. Yeah, there are a lot of blueberries in Kentucky. Okay, so that's one example. What's something else you know about blue skin? Someone tell me, what's something you know about blues? When do people get blue skin?
Poor circulation.
Poor circulation. So kids, a lot of kids mentioned, I know when I have blue skin, it's when you, um, like, uh, if you're cold. So they talked about like the temperature, like what did it have to do with environmental conditions? Some kids got to the point where they said, is it oxy, are they deprived of oxygen for some reason? Or, and their question was, are they at high elevations? So it was just, I mean, this was like a thirty-minute time span where kids were like really digging into, what do I see? What do I know in my mind from my experience that I know to be true? And then therefore what question do I now have that relates to it? So again, it's not about knowing the material, it's not about presenting material, content. It's about really getting them to, to ask questions, to, to make observations.
If you go to the next slide, it's actually, these are some questions and they can, they can have way more questions than you guys did.
Um, this is along with, yeah, obviously you guys knows, I wonders. This one, this one you guys, the man is a, uh, the woman, the man is a, um, the dad was an immigrant and came from France. The mom is a redhead, the mom is a redhead. And then this student wrote, I know that some DNA, we get some DNA from our mom and our dad. And the question is, what genes did the dad have? So again, it's connecting experience with observations and then having really good questions. And then we come back to these questions as we start to get more micro with students. So then we do talk about this unit covered genetics, it covered meiosis, the process of making sperm and egg. It covered, um, what else did we do? Uh, circulatory system and pedigrees and looking at, uh, diseases and how diseases are passed on to, to families. So as we went through this unit, students would come back to these questions and we would ask them periodically, like, are there any questions from your wonderings that you can now answer? Or things that you can eliminate now?
Okay, so if we go to the next one, um, throughout the process, we do have to deliver content. It's not that the company is gone. We do deliver content and then we learn from the content. So, um, the next step would be doing investigations, hands-on stuff. So this is for example lab where they're actually analyzing their own cereal from their breakfast. And depending on how much sugar the cereal has, if you use it on a, if you do that at home, um, it will create more or less CO2. So the balloon, which one had more sugar?
Blue. Blue, yeah, you got it. Okay. Honey and cereal, that's all. Kids, so, kids, so they have, yeah, you're really surprised by that. Kids only has four grams of sugar, so if you're gonna feed your, uh, cereal, this is the one.
Okay, so that would be, you're planning investigation, you're carrying out investigation. Um, and actually something that we started doing also because of that mixed level classrooms, we realized pretty early that some kids normally require more support than others. So this is for example, um, what we had them create before they went to the bench and performed the investigation. See, this is a scaffold version. This is for someone who needed a bit more content. If you go to the next slide. Here.
Yes.
So this would be the version of whoever said, no, I got it. I don't need more content. I'm good to go.
So this was a big piece, like this was a really critical piece to having a classroom that is not leveled and has like diverse learners in it, um, is creating the scaffolds. And at first we felt like, oh, we just give everyone the scaffold and everyone, um, benefits from the scaffold. But what we realized was, and I think what you heard last year is some students felt like the rigor of the class wasn't as high as they wanted it to be. And so what we ended up doing was we just made these resources available to students. And students really did just decide whether they were gonna use them or not. So, um, some students were like, I don't even wanna look at the scaffolded one. And then every once in a while about halfway through, they'd come up or they'd grab one just to kind of take a peek or they'd take a picture with their cell phone because they didn't want to know they were using it. But it was like a resource that they could use and that was great that they were using that resource.
Um, okay, so the next one would be, okay, maybe investigations. This is not an investigation. We were doing Christmas to X. Uh, but then we measured, so they were able to do calculations. So this is a real investigation where they collect data. But now they are going to analyze that data. So it's not only, um, create an investigation, it's now analyzing data I get from the investigation. Next one. Uh, so same thing, we would give them now the two versions they can choose. They can pick one and the other and decide which one they want. This would be the more general one. These had some content, so they, sometimes we give them just four bits and that sometimes is not. Of course we're circulating, so we always can, you know, help individuals. Um, next one. So we are getting towards the end, we're almost done. So, um, the next phase is when, okay, we investigated, we were able to create an investigation, run it, collect data, interpret the data. And now we're putting the pieces together. So I don't know if you can see this, these are three pictures, micro, from microscope. So they were looking at three different types of plants and counting the number of stomata. What are the holes that plants use to get CO2 and and oxygen out?
We took the plants from the greenhouse at the school. So the kids were able to head down to the greenhouse when class went down. And also these pictures were pictures kids took with their cell phones with the microscope. So it's pretty cool that they can really take some really awesome images with their cell phones.
So now they were able to, um, design the investigation, run it, collect data, interpret the data. And here is some argumentation of what they're seeing. So the question was, who plans varying the number, numbers? Was someone alive or why not? So this person said, plants do vary in the stomach. For example, the spider worm will grow faster, which doesn't bring connection. If I have more holes, I will grow faster because I will have more CO2 and that will imply I can perform more photosynthesis, I never think it, right? So we're really far away from where we started the unit. Next one. So we're getting towards the end and these are the final models. So this, for example, if you remember the boom and the little person saying chum, chum, chum. This is where we ended. How does eating help heal a wound? So that's what we are at. Okay, so we are developing models, communicating, uh, creating arguments, but also putting that content piece with our skill piece together. If you go to the next one. Um, this is also on, the same one on the healing the wound, next one. This is the Kentucky Blue People, so look at all the connections they made. And interestingly, something microscopic, like cell respiration happens inside a cell. But then we have something way bigger, like circular system. But then we have things like genetics, which is very microscopic. But then we are all also able to use math to predict whether they're going to be blue or not. So they're able to combine all this information. So it's not compartmentalized anymore. Now they're making all the connections across the curriculum and they're able to put it in one model.
And what's cool about the models is that you can really see students thinking. Like this was the last one of this school year and students were really comfortable with like, there's no two models that are the same with the final model, which is really neat to see. Um, and students will look at each others and sort of like give each other feedback on that or see what they're thinking is. And it's just really cool to see how kids are connecting. Uh, one of the challenges we had for students was, can you connect from the first unit? Something you learned from the first unit. So, um, these final models really show a long process, um, more than anything for us. Okay, next slide. Okay, so talk about scaffolds. So what did we give students to do those final models? This was like the lowest level of scaffolding we gave. So this was just key vocabulary. We wanted them, we didn't even tell them what vocabulary to use. We just said we want relevant vocabulary. We want you to make a model, so it should be pictures and visuals, less, uh, less words. Um, think about the visuals we want to include and then think about how we would modify those visuals and make them relevant to the Kentucky Blue People page. So this was the lowest level of scaffolding we gave. And if you go to the next slide, you can see that this would be for students who were unsure as to where does there appear to be some questions in no particular order. In fact, we tried to like fix them all up and we highlighted sort of main points like inheritance, blood, transcription, translation, fertilization, meiosis, pedigree, mutations. And so we asked students to like use these questions as prompts to then help to guide their thinking of the model. So they weren't just answering these questions, but they were, um, helping to sort of facilitate, a process to then create a model for the, for, for the assignment. Okay, so that sort of takes you through like what we did this year. And that's really what we think gave us our biggest bang for our buck in terms of like the student experience um, in the class and what we think really like helped to, um, lead to the success that students had. Uh, we really just wanna talk briefly about next steps. Um, so for this school year, so the things in green are things that we felt like we did well and we're gonna continue to do this year. So the, um, the, the three main ones are iterative learning. This is this idea that we're gonna revisit content over and over. We're gonna reuse competencies, uh, throughout the year. We're gonna keep the competencies at the heart of what we're doing and then use the content to drive the competencies. We're gonna think about learning as this continuum of looking big, then going micro, then looking big again and keep coming back and forth through that, using our like, uh, uh, burning targets as stepping stones. And again, to make sure that we're aligned in our progressions and like what the competencies are that we wanna focus on. Things in red, which Elsa's gonna talk about, are some things that we're really trying to grow in our practice. And we feel like last year we're pretty weak. And to be honest with you, they're really, um, some of them are, we're growing in and some of them are still pretty weak for this year. So, uh,
Yeah, so some, some, something that stuck in my mind, uh, I read a couple of months ago was that you don't learn from mistakes, you learn from reflecting on those mistakes. And we believe that it's not only about, yes, I made a mistake, I know it's wrong. It's like, okay, let's stop and look at the mistakes and use them as growing opportunities, but only if I take the time to review them. So we are trying to improve that stopping, slowing down and what did I do? What do I notice? How can I fix it? And, and do that at a personal level, have all of us stop and reflect. So I think that we have started doing that and, and, and I definitely see a difference in the students. It's so powerful.
A barrier, I mean, that the barrier in the self-reflection is it all takes time. It takes a lot more time, especially with younger students and freshmen, definitely need more prompting and time to do this. And at the ninth grade level, we are not the only teachers doing this. Uh, there's a lot of ninth grade teachers who are trying to get like built in this self-reflection, which is a critical part of competency-based instruction. And a lot of people are just feeling that tug of like wanting to keep moving forward, but needing to go slow to go fast, really.
So, um, just touching on growth mindset and, um, and seeing mistakes as a growing opportunity and not as something to be ashamed of. I think that has to do a lot with the, with the atmosphere inside the classroom and how we are all learners and we trust each other. And I actually, for example, I asked formation to my students to share their work and they all agree and I don't do it on this. They tell me that it's okay and we all believe and, 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 and trust each other to make those mistakes, share those mistakes. So that has to happen in, in teams. It can't happen as individuals.
So can I just add the growth mindset too, I think really applies to teachers as well. I feel like that's something that we talk to our students a lot about and the, the self-reflection is something that teachers are doing a lot more of at the high school. And I definitely want to honor that, that there's a lot, um, a lot of work that goes into reflecting and being really honest about like what's working and what's not working and taking the time to acknowledge those. We mentioned that. So some of these things are not just students, but like what we're, we're trying to challenge ourselves doing as a faculty as well.
And the last thing I have to do actually with student choice, one is during the classroom and the other one is during assessment. And I can say that those are probably our points right now. I mean, we do try to give opportunities, to give choices, to, to have students be the ones expressing what the best thing for them is the specific moment and give them the freedom to choose what's best for them. Um, we definitely do less by winning constant assessment fees. But it's something that we, we recognize and we definitely want to work on this year.
It's probably our biggest area, but the biggest work area.
Yeah, and that was it.
Questions or?
So using the, so using this model that you've said, how do you explain this, the increase in scores?
I think it is, it, what we've done is trained students to think more, I would say holistically about problems. I mean, there's a lot of reading and writing that is involved in thinking in this way. So I think reading and writing, building people's confidence. I think in science and math in particular, kids are really, um, they view themselves as either like a math student or not or, oh, I like science or I don't. Um, and I think that by asking a kid, what observations do you have? Like putting it all out there, like it doesn't matter if you're the smartest kid in the class. It like, it does not matter what kids come up, like when you look at kids' initial models, it, it is like a level playing field because, um, students that are used to getting like being like, oh, I know the answer. They have no clue. They have no clue. And then students who, um, aren't so great with memorizing information and facts, but they're really just creative and they're thinking and they put out any like random idea. And then they see us be like, oh, that's a good thought. Let's write it down. Like let's just put anything out there. I think there's some value in giving kids the opportunity to just like say whatever in terms of their ideas. And it gives them a confidence that I think that they don't have and they feel like there's an answer, there's a right answer and you may or may not get it. So I think that's a, I think that's one big piece.
Yeah, I think that, um, given the students have context and relevance to the topic is very important, it's very important to get some buy-in. Um, if you go cold turkey and say, here it goes, it's amazing biochemistry. Uh, it's really hard for them to get engaged with the material and retain it. If you teach them how to make the connections by themselves and, um, to become curious and, and to become confident because now they have the skills. Now they know how to create an investigation, how to ask questions, how to model, how start, how to reflect. I think that's very powerful. And we actually have a student who was with us last year and she, I didn't want to put you in the spot. I'm so glad.
I was gonna say that I really enjoyed the use, like the, um, the coloring.
Yeah.
Yeah, because like writing the information down, like being creative with it just helps me like to retain it better because I was like actually doing something with it and not just like answering a question. I was like putting it into like a model. Um, so I really enjoyed that.
Thank you, Maddie.
Any other questions?
Observation, just, it's interesting, certainly at first, it seems like a much more engaging, interesting way to learn. And I wonder if any of the pushback around the rigor comes from that because instead of feeling like kind of information is getting, and learning is getting banged over the head or it's just you're almost having fun and in a lot of ways not even realizing you're learning, but you're learning. Um, so I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
I, I definitely think it's a perception that like when you look, it was funny, we were looking at the, you know, Bloom's taxonomy or Webb's taxonomy now is depth of knowledge, right? So recall is like the lowest level of, um, slow, subtle skill you can have. But sometimes it feels like that's what students value. Like if I can remember all of these things, all of these vocabulary words or how to like, that to, to me, sometimes I feel like that gets confused with like, so this, um, idea of just like knowing things, but not understanding things or not having a skill that you can then apply. Like I think that was really obvious in the students that visited last year when someone said at the edge like, what you just presented, the data you collected, the questions you have, the process you went through analyzing it, then synthesizing it and bringing it to not just a school committee, but they brought it to the teachers, um, who it was pretty like a hard thing to hear. And, uh, you know, learning the skills of like how to say things when you're not happy or how to work with people when you have different viewpoints. Like, I think that, um, maybe, I think there's like a shift in the mindset of what we value. And I think that also comes from parents too. I mean, I graduated from high school in 2003. And even for me, I feel like I, um, like with my own child now, and if I wasn't a teacher, I would probably feel like it's more about content and knowledge and information. That's what's difficult. And really, it's all of these processes that we want students to be able to, um, transfer to other areas. You know, we, that's what we want for our students. I don't really care if they can remember, you know, the light. And that's the thing, those start Google, the questions we ask and then it's like, oh, there's like, and they can Google and they can try to find them. But you don't get the whole picture. Um, so.
Yeah. And then so with the next generation, I mean, if, if MCAS would move this way, it seems this is something that is being done across classrooms.
Well, so NGSS is something that is happening across the country and Massachusetts just adopted the MCAS. It's interesting because they have it since 2016 and I don't understand why we just started with an MCAS. Um, so it's definitely happening across the state in biology, but also in physics and chemistry. It's a bit different because physics and chemistry normally don't get to the MCAS. So they have more freedom, but the way they teach is definitely also called an NGSS format. I don't think that they have adopted the phenomenon so much. Um, but yeah, they are, we're using competencies and they are definitely going into that uh, more integrated, less recalling.
If you, and if you look at like for, uh, the other day I was working with a US history teacher, great, um, for US history and I just pulled up the MCAS frameworks. And so there's still content, but when you look at the frameworks, there's like four main competencies that you see. So it's in every single classroom in a high school level, in a middle school level, in elementary school level, you're going to see can students, um, create a, look at evidence and make a claim and then use that to, to reason, right? Like that's a, that's a competency. So when we talk about like our portrait of a graduate, um, what part of our process and doing these per, the proficiency from the competencies is really looking at, what do I do in science? What is Gordy Smol doing in ninth grade history? What is Kathy Erickson doing in math? And what is Tarver Cat doing in English? And what skills are we all focusing on? And so claim evidence, reasoning, communication, that's one, that's for sure, one skill that everybody is looking on. So I think that there is this push to really look at like a more holistic approach of not just in science, but in general.
Are there thoughts on moving to Kentucky Blue then become something that Kathy's doing math on and they're doing writing?
So that, that's actually a really good question. And yes, so the future of competencies eventually is going into interdisciplinary projects. So, uh, I know the chemistry is working together with social studies right now, uh, a unit on, um, nuclear chemistry together with the second world war and Hiroshima, et cetera. So yes, it's happening in, in pockets, but hopefully in the future it's going to be something very common that happens. Common experience is across disciplines.
Yeah, I would say the challenge right now is our schedule. We are operating in a really traditional schedule at the high school. I mean, we've changed it a million times. You know, we do blocks, we do a rotation, we have eight periods, we have four periods. We, you know, we have everything on the sun. Um, but I think we need to start really looking at, number one, the time it takes for teachers to develop units like that. Is that's a major overhaul in the way that teachers plan and the way that teachers, um, think about the student experience. I just came back from Denver, um, and did a school visit there, um, one of the high schools. And it was a really cool experience to see what they did was, um, students came into the high school. Ninth graders had more of a typical ninth grade experience. And then when they got to tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade, kids come to school, um, in August. They meet with their advisory teacher, their crew teacher, and they pick courses. So they don't, uh, sorry, they pick like mini courses. So for example, um, there was one course, uh, like Ninja, do you guys know like Ninja Warrior, the show? Were they great? So it's a Ninja Warrior class, but it's based on, I don't know, because the, I, I think maybe calculus or geometry and a PE credit. So kids sign up for classes based on projects. There was a shoemaking class. Like there were all sorts of different classes and they collaborated with like very different teachers in subject areas. So they didn't sign up for a subject, they signed up for a project. And those classes had, um, credits assigned to them based on like what the objectives were of the class, which is very different. And they also have a very different schedule, which includes, um, once a week, the kids are doing, working in, um, at the high school, they're doing internships, they're doing independent projects and the teachers have a four hour block of time once a week. And they are planning because it really does take a tremendous amount of time. The schedule that we have right now, forty minutes here, thirty-five minutes there, twenty-five minutes there. When you, it's not just about grading. And when you try to grade this stuff, like trying to create a final model is not the same as grading a multiple choice test. It's, it's a process that you need other people to do with you. And that takes time, it takes collaboration and in our current system, it just is, it's a, it's, it's like a meat grinder, I guess. It's just so hard to do it and to do it well. So, and also like Kathy Erickson doesn't teach exactly the same kids that I teach at the same time period. But if we had flexibility, if we had like a big block of time that we could decide as teachers in the ninth grade, okay, math and science are doing this and we're forming for this block of time on these days, that like changes the whole way that we look at school and how we look at our departments and how we look at student experience.
It totally sets up everything that we're talking about. Uh, I just want to thank you two, like the, one of the hardest challenges of working in schools is to make the work explicit and the, the two of you did that tonight in a really, uh, deep and thoughtful way. And I know it took a lot of time and I'd really like to appreciate that. It's a big deal. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Okay, um, that's great. So just a, a couple little updates, the, the regional school district planning board's been meeting a lot and, and that group has the main group and then a lot of separate, uh, uh, subcommittees. They held some, uh, student meetings to gather feedback, uh, one in Great Barrington, one at, um, Mount Everett, they're continuing those conversations. They're, they're having some, uh, community meetings. I mentioned the additional resources, uh, that the group got. The, the finance side is looking at, uh, uh, transportation and the quick summary around transportation is, uh, it's possible to move students around in a way that's neither terribly time consuming nor expensive. So we've answered the transportation question. It's not an obstacle to.
It's a huge, that's a huge question to answer.
So, so that, that's a big one. The, the, um, regional, uh, the group that's looking at, at, uh, the regional agreement is doing all sorts of financial modeling and different possibilities. Um, and, and that works really promising and, and interesting. And obviously no decisions have been made, uh, but they're looking at, I mean, sort of parallel to what they did, right? They're looking at models, ask questions to, to do stuff. So, so that's really, um, that's really good. Um, uh, some of the towns have new school committee members, so we're waiting for the moderators of those towns to appoint the new school committee members onto, uh, that group. And, and then just sort of connected, um, in Stockbridge, we still have a vacancy, so I'll be connecting, um, uh, Jason and Corey with the three select people in Stockbridge. Uh, through joint laser, like somebody, and apparently somebody's expressed some interest in doing that. So that's great. Um, so that's it on that part. On the subcommittee reports, policy, we have two, uh, policies that we did a first reading of last time. Sometimes we make policies from scraps that are particular needs and sometimes we make, or we adopt policies uh, because it's our obligation to adopt them. These are both, uh, are recommended that we adopt, um, the ones on how we work with, um, military children and the other one is around how we work with foster children. Uh, I, I recommend we, or that, that you vote to approve both of them.
So with regard to policy, JFABE, educational opportunities for military children, do I have a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
And I believe policies do have to be roll call votes in all instances.
I think so.
Yeah. Um, Stephen Bannon, uh, not present. Uh, Corey Sprague?
Aye.
Diane Singer? Bonnie Bon Baphoni?
Aye.
Jason St. Peter?
Aye.
William Fields?
Yes.
Ann Hutchinson?
Aye.
Sarah Borla?
Aye.
Uh, I vote yes, carries unanimously. Um, with regard to policy, JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Once again, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Steve Bannon is, uh, absent. Uh, Corey Sprague?
Aye.
Diane Singer?
Yes.
Bonnie Bon Baphoni?
Aye.
Jason St. Peter?
Aye.
William Fields?
Yes.
Ann Hutchinson?
Aye.
Sarah Borla?
Aye.
And I vote yes, carries unanimously.
Thank you. So, uh, Jason, Bill, Sir, Lawrence?
I have none.
Okay, uh, and superintendent's evaluation. We have a meeting coming up.
Well, I haven't seen the date yet, but we're trying.
Yeah, the twentieth. Um, finance, Rich?
Yeah, well, we just met before the meeting today, um, which was not any, wasn't not one of our program specific meetings, just generally kind of wrapping up that and starting to move towards composition of the draft preliminary draft, draft budget, um, which is never a good number to look at because that's always not really reflective of, of much. We did, did identify both from things that were identified by the principals at the various presentations as well as ideas that the subcommittee had about potential moves in the budget variations. There are, I'll say mine, or there are a couple of maybe personnel additions or moving around thing that the superintendent and the principals will present to you folks at some point. But if anyone has, you know, potential ideas that would have a budget impact, now is probably the time to relay them either to our committee at the next meeting or directly to Peter or Sharon. So if there, so as the models start to develop, if you want that in the mix, they can start working on the backup stuff for that. But in terms of, you know, just procedural concerns, Sharon felt good, but no hard information on the healthcare costs, you know, jobs can be, is a driver out of our control. And with regard to the, both the state budget and the minimum local contribution, there's no insight on that, nor would there normally be this time. But we may not get that till further on in the budget process just because of the new governor coming in and the statutory deadline shift related to that. So that's where we're at, but we're on track with the, that probably have something to present at least preliminary in December, end of December or January.
And negotiations doesn't have anything now, but may come back to the group on next meeting. In terms of retirements, I just want to acknowledge that Vicki Shuffton, our school psychologist, is shared her intent to retire at the end of the school year in June. As we, as we start to post that position, it's going to be one of several positions that we're going to try to cast a wide net and particularly look for somebody who is a licensed school psychologist, but ideally also bilingual in Spanish. That's a, that's a nice opportunity and she's around for a while, but we wish her, we wish her well.
And then moving on to, do you have anything else on any other?
I guess just public comment.
Oh, any older new business from the committee? Anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
Sometime get it on the agenda about talking about the meetings and finance board. And guess, I'm not and guess, but school superintendent.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So let's, let's just put that on the next gen.
We'll put it on the, on the next agenda. And you don't have to, but if you want to do like a slideshow, you can, or you could just talk about it.
Give slides to Peter.
What?
I don't know if he had like major themes or something.
Anne's not doing the slideshow. So move to public comment. I do see that Erica Milkie has her hand raised appropriately, so we can start with her, but.
Did you know? Yeah, I did. Erica, go ahead.
Hi, guys. I was just, I kind of thought that there would actually be more of a discussion of the thing I'd asked about two weeks ago about the different ways, all the different adult-linked school groups. You had joked about maybe a color-coded visual graphic, but and you had answered some of it, Peter, right immediately after I asked the question at the last district meeting. But I was actually hoping, the ones you described were the ones I was well aware of. And there are other ways that the district is reaching out and allowing adult or family engagement. And I'm getting more into who's invited to what they're doing, under whose domain they are, et cetera. So I am hoping that can happen.
Yeah, so sorry, I just, I think with, with the break, I got, I got derailed on that. I actually, now that I promised it and I was teasing Anne about putting together some slides, I will myself, this is what you get when you do that. I will, I'll talk to the principals and I'll try to put together some slides around that. And I want to be careful, Erica, that we talk not just about allowing, but, but actually encouraging
Yeah.
participation that, that, that it's, it's, it's very much meant to be an exchange.
Perfect. And I just, other people have asked me and I want to be informed about all these different subcommittees and the subgroup. So that will be great.
Great.
If that could include Erica, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I was not at the meeting, so I don't know exactly the intent, but a list like that sounds like it would be very helpful. And what would also, a big part of that would also be the mission and kind of like the the kind of marching orders of those groups. Because I certainly heard from parents confusion and questions about what, why and what purpose people are getting together for.
Yeah.
Because one of the questions that had been coming up from a few different groups that I'm involved with is, you know, is there overlap? Is it cannibalizing existing groups? What is the mission? What's the purpose and who, under whose oversight?
Yeah, so we can definitely do that. There is an interesting other overlap that I think you're getting at is, is that co-curricular group is going to look at at some of the booster clubs and activities, so. But in some, in some ways, it's connected. We'll, we'll do some work and, and at least present a graph of where things are so that we can then have another version of where we want things to be and then, and then do the work to get there.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Either online or present, have any comment? Seeing none, by unanimous consent, we stand adjourned.